Alderman, ladies and gentlemen, I ask you please to stand for the merits here, Clarence O'Connell.
Good evening, everyone, thank you very much. I ask the General Manager to recite the council prayer tonight in the absence of the other two speakers.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian water group community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and on your behalf, acknowledge the elders past and present, and also remind everyone the meeting is being recorded, audio visually, and will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. To clear the meeting open, and we have apologies, I'll say again, we have Alderman Chong and Alderman Doust on leave. No other apologies. Item two, confirmation of the minutes, the 18th of June, and the special council meeting on the 21st of June. Thank you, second of Alderman and Cusack. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. There's nothing to report at item three. Item four, the council notes the workshops on the 25th of June, 2nd of July, and the agenda briefing on the 6th of July. Alderman Hume, second of Alderman Pierce. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close association. They've been none. There's nothing at item six, unless there are any petitions to table from the floor. Thank you. Item seven, public question time. There's no public questions on notice or answers to questions on notice, however, there is answer to a previous question taken on notice. In fact, two of those, General Manager.
Mr Mayor, I don't know, given that the answers are printed in the agenda, whether you wish me to read them or just note that the answers to the questions are printed in the agenda.
Happy to take that, unless there's any request for them to be read out, in which case, thank you to General Manager, they will obviously appear in the minutes as well.
Correct, yes.
Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Mr Gied. If you could, of course, identify yourself and...
Michael Gied, 53, Cambridge Road, Bell Reef. In regards to Blunston Arena, income to the council is 0.89% of audited turnover, which last year was approximately $22 million, so that's about $198,000 income to council. Would it be possible to know the breakup and amount of expenses incurred by council for the Blunston Arena?
Absolutely no problem at all. We'll take that on notice though, for obvious reasons, and they'll be in the next agenda papers. Mr Figg?
Oh, thank you.
If you could, for the record, identify yourself and address those.
I thought that was already done, you acknowledged my name. My name is Michael Figg and...
You're right there, Alderman? Sorry, Mr Figg?
We just had a grunt from one of your members, I was just asking, she was concerned about her health. Anyway, I'll ask the question. The question is this, I noticed at the previous council meeting, there was a question in relation to the Lord of our boat ramp. Could you please tell me, have communications been underway or undertaken in relation to reinstating the boat ramp at Lord of our?
General Manager?
Sorry, can I ask, communications with who? With the Crown Land Department or any other department of the government?
If you could stand, please.
Could you please introduce this gentleman, as I don't know? Thank you. Right. So, we have some concept plans from a consultant for the Lord of our... So, from your response through you, Mr Chairman, that means that no representation has been made to government or any government department in relation to that at this stage?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I think I heard Mr Griston say that he has, there has been consultation with Crown Lands. I don't think any formal final plans have been lodged with them at this stage, but I'd also go as far as to say that we've also met with Mast down there in recent times as well, so there has been some consultation with government departments, yes.
My further question in relation to that...
It's normal only to accept two questions under meeting procedures.
Well, when you hear an error in the answer, it's usually normal to...
Mr Figg, look, I don't wish to tolerate an argument here. Would you please sit down? I'm willing to take a question on notice for the next meeting.
Mr Mayor, you're employed as the chairman of this...
Mr Figg, look, I've written to you before about disrupting these meetings.
I would like to ask you...
I'd like to formally order you right now to...
You cannot order me, Mr Figg.
All right, look, I'm asking you to leave the meeting.
No, I will not leave the meeting.
Okay, I declare the meeting suspended until you've either left the meeting or escorted out.
It is my right as a ratepayer to ask a question, and, Mr Mayor, this is disgraceful and you should be ashamed of yourself.
I'll resume the question at item 7.4. Are there any other questions without notice? Thank you. Item eight, there are no deputations from members of the public?
None, sir, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. No items at item nine. Reports from outside bodies, Southern Tasmanian Council's authority. There's quarterly reports not required, but I'd like to table the minutes for the board meeting held on the 14th of May, 2018. Helping refuse disposal site joint authority, Alderman Campbell.
No, sir, forceless.
And there's nothing to report under the Tasmanian Water Corporation. Moving on to item 11.1, the information, oh, go around the table first of all, reports from representative bodies and special committees. Alderman Hume.
Mayor, I have the minutes of the business piece of water management meeting to make.
Thank you. Other reports. Okay, item 11.1, the information, the weekly briefing reports of the 18th and 25th of June and 2nd of July be noted. Thanks, Alderman Pierce, second of Alderman Cusack. Any questions? Alderman James?
Mr Mayor, the weekly briefing report of the 18th of June, and in particular, the appeal against council's decision on 21 Harmony Lane, on page 22. My question through you to Mr Lovell, in his capacity as the manager of city planning. Mr Lovell, can you just bring the council up to speed with where we're at, and I understand there has been a directions hearing convened. Could you just throw some light on the matter, and in your comments address that there may be a requirement for a sound wall barrier to be built during the construction phase of the skateboard park if it does proceed? Mr Lovell?
Yes, Mr Mayor, there was a mediation session from all the sides. What I've got is a number of...
For you to Mr Lovell. Mr Lovell, it's my understanding that the cost of the skate park at South Arms of the vicinity of about $250,000. Is that, if should it proceed with the sound wall, would that add another 50-odd thousand and would be outside council's sort of budget?
Mr Mayor, well, the precise figure would be, would be a change by the nature of many waters and structure. You might call it, in the conditions of the permanent transmission, the point that new testing is done after the events have been...
Any other questions or comments on the weekly briefing? Alderman Pierce?
On first page, do I second? Bathfield Street, I'm just wondering, a lot of people have inquired, with the new works in Bathfield Street, when are the line markings going to take place? So, we're supposed to take place Sunday, and I certainly understand with the weather why they did not. Can anyone tell me if they're going to take place this Sunday or is there any time span?
Um, oh, sorry, rest... Any other questions or comments? In that case, I'll put the motion that the info in the weekly briefing report be noted. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 11.2.1 is a result of a petition, investigate and implement streetworks to minimise traffic hazards in Norma Street. Alderman Pierce, thank you, Alderman McCarlin. Any discussion? Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor, look, I understand what the residents are talking about, I've run up there. The fact is, we can do some work, there's no risk on that, but there's so many other streets in Clarence that have got similar conditions as Norma Street. But, it is, you know, it is a bus route, so I can understand their concerns, and some of the photos we've got, Attachment One, is, you know, pretty scary, so hopefully, you know, our officers can have a look at this and hopefully get some successful outcomes.
Alderman McCarlin?
Mr, I support the report and some investigations.
Thank you, other speakers. I support the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now advised that council intends to set as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. The first item under the planning agenda is 11.3.1, development application at 6 Morgan Street, Richmond, for an outbuilding. Thank you, Alderman McCarlin, second of Alderman Cusack. Alderman McCarlin?
Support the recommendation.
Alderman Cusack?
There were some representation issues raised, some representations received and issues raised, but I think they've been adequately addressed.
Two other speakers. Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.2 is a development application, 153 Blessington Street, South Arm, for a shed and carport. Alderman Hume, thank you, second of Alderman McCarlin. Alderman Hume, Alderman McCarlin. Other speakers? The recommendations for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. 11.3.3 is a development application at 7 and 9 Waverley Street, Bell Reef, for demolition and dwelling. Alderman McCarlin, thank you. Second of Alderman Hume. Speakers, Alderman McCarlin?
Once again, these are the types of infill development we will be anticipating seeing in the future. There are always some problems that need to be overcome, however, I think the recommendations have resulted.
Motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. 11.3.4 is a development application at 1A Laweli Road, Indisvan, for a dwelling. Alderman, thank you, Walker, second of Alderman Cusack. Speakers?
For the report.
Thank you. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.5, development application at 314 and 318 East Dewan Highway. Yoston Bay? Alderman James?
The officer's recommendation, Mr Mayor, and also advised that this has had a...
Have a second before you move on?
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Cusack.
Thank you, Alderman Cusack. This has had a mixed usage over the years, and in fact, John X's parents, many years, had to shop on that, in that location. This is a change of use, in particular to the hours, it's supporting small business, and I seek council support.
Thank you, Alderman Cusack.
I think it was, yeah, it's been, as Alderman James said, been a commercial precinct for a long, long time, back to when there was a hardware shop out there, probably 30 years ago, and I spot office's recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Okay, so the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. 11.3.6 is a development application at 172 Bayview Road, Lord of our, for dwelling. Alderman Campbell? Moved. Second of Alderman Von Berto, thank you. Speakers? Alderman Von Berto, other speakers. In that case, the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. 11.3.6 is a development application at 172 Bayview Road, Lord of our, for dwelling. Alderman Campbell? Moved. Second of Alderman Von Berto, thank you. Speakers? Alderman Von Berto, other speakers. In that case, the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. 11.3.7 is a section 43A amendment, application, and a 30-lot subdivision at 22 Atkins Street, Ropie. I think Alderman James was first on...
No, he didn't.
I've called Alderman James.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I circulated a motion in relation to 22 Atkins Street, and I'll just read the first part of it, and then I can have a second up...
Do we have a second? Thanks, Alderman Pierce.
Mr Mayor, the council resolves under section 341A of the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act, 993, to initiate a draft amendment of 2018/1 at 22 Atkins Street in Ropie. Mr Mayor, this matter was brought forward and has been discussed, and it's in relation, this particular motion's before us is to seek an amendment to the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act, in order to initiate a draft amendment, to go to the TPC, with Tasmanian Planning Commission, with a view to investigate and perhaps consider that this large parcel of land ought to be considered, and a basic movement in the urban growth boundary line, which basically stops or terminates at the junction of the Atkins Street and Joseph Street in Ropie. The actual area of land is quite large, but it also means that there is potential for development, and also to all of the services, the infrastructure and services, as I mentioned, at that junction where the road terminates at Atkins and Joseph Street are already in place. But the urban growth boundary as part of the Southern Tasmanian land use strategy that I was about to... Basically, has terminated this development, or anything that would entail development within the land in question, because the urban growth boundary ceases at that point. At this stage, it's only for us to seek a draft amendment, or to initiate a draft amendment, to be, obviously with council's support, if that's the way it's determined, to go, to be forwarded to the Tasmanian Planning Commission, to investigate as to whether or not the merits of a shift in the urban growth boundary at those junctions of those two streets I mentioned, to enable in the longer term development of this land mass, which is sandwiched between the Ropie residential area, and also onto Marwood's land, and the Harrow Gardens Centre and beyond. On one side, you have Ropie Town, if you call it that, then you have the South Arm Highway, then you have the Gleve Establishment Development, then you have Harrow Gardens and that development, which is occurring within that. So, look, there's this large parcel of land, which I believe is crying out for development to extend the urban growth boundary and enable development, presumably if the TPC may go through the process and warrant the merits of a movement in the urban growth boundary. And then ultimately, it would rest with the minister if the Tasmanian Planning Commission should decide to do that. The other part of the motion is part B, that council resolves repair or modify draft amendment to the Clarence Infra and Planning Scheme, as detailed at section 3.3 of the office report. It does not address anything in relation to the subdivision, it merely addresses the question of the urban growth boundary realignment, if you want to use that term, to enable development, hopefully, if the Tasmanian Planning Commission believes the warrant and merits of that application that council puts forward, and ultimately, if that's the case, then hopefully the minister would provide his consent. I seek council support.
Thank you, Alderman James. Thank you, Mayor, look, Alderman James expressed that succinctly, I don't think I need to go over that, because I agree with him, I think it's an ideal spot to increase the urban growth boundary. I mean, look, we are crying out for housing in this area, here's a chance to take it to the proper authorities, and just see if we can give the urban growth boundary extended. And it's in the right place, we've all got the street board, the report's very good at our minds, keep us thinking it, and I think we certainly need our support. Mr Lovell? I'm a bit confused by all of this, I met with the representative of the proposal Friday afternoon. If this land had been within the urban growth boundary, the original application, do you think that would have been approved, or would have been recommended for approval? If the urban growth boundary hadn't been a matter, an issue here? Here we are, that was within the urban growth boundary, had appropriately zoned, would be just dealt with under the provisions of the zoning, irrespective of whether the subdivisional design was adequate or not.
There are certain technical problems with the design of the subdivision, in general residential area, but the main one being, assortment of design is mandatory, and the second element is the lot size of the environment, which is...
As I said, I met with a component, a representative of the component, proponent, I made an appointment 2.30 on Friday afternoon, the gender breaking, and I understood that from their perspective, the urban growth boundary was the issue. And when I said, we just had a briefing, I said, I think there are some subdivisional design matters, he said, nothing at all.
Yeah, it's fair to ask questions of the staff, but not to open a debate with the staff. Okay, Alderman Burley, thank you.
Mr Mayor, we as the council discussed the fact that the government needs to provide more strategic review of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, and this was a few weeks ago. So, with that in mind, I came to look at that, the piece of land that we are discussing today, and this is an example of a very piece of land that actually is ripe for review, because it sits very much on an existing subdivision. And the beauty thing about this piece of land and the proposed potential subdivision is that there is infrastructure already in place. There's public transport to this area, so there's no additional pressure put on existing infrastructure. It has connectivity to the existing suburbs, and if I quote from the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, 2010 to 2035, which was originally declared in October 2011, and a minor review was considered in 2013, that adds weight to the fact that we do need a strategic review of this land use strategy. But part of the outcomes for this strategy are that we need better integrating land use and infrastructure planning, this is quoted from the report, we can ensure that new development makes use of excess capacity in existing infrastructure, which is exactly what this land would do, rather than creating demand for new infrastructure in unserviced areas. Many infrastructure related problems could be avoided or minimised by locating new development so as to maximise the use of existing infrastructure in the short, medium and longer term. So, with Greater Hobart, one of the least densely settled of the major cities in Australia, with larger houses on larger allotments on the urban fringe being common over the past 10 years, a significant component of residential dwelling growth was this tendency to have larger blocks, larger houses. However, the report says, or the strategy says, that in 20 to 25 years, the preferred housing stock is expected to be smaller houses on smaller allotments in closer proximity to services and facilities. And this particular piece of land is exactly the type of land that sits within this criteria.
Alderman McCarlin?
I do not support the motion on the table at this moment.
Um, I do not support the motion on the table at this moment, Mr. Mayor. For a long time, we spent a long time looking at the Southern Regional Land Use Strategy. And within the context of that, it's the broader agenda of this government, or any government, ability to create and maintain infrastructure. I seem to remember that it took twenty years for Ogeana Drive to get connected to the South Arm Highway. And within that context, often the government is lagging in creating those connections. And we as a council have not come on board in our strategic planning. We don't have a hierarchy of roads. We don't have headworks charges anymore. And so therefore, these sorts of developments to me are nothing less than ad hoc. And even though you can say that they're in a good place, et cetera, et cetera, um, I don't believe that this application adequately addresses the adjacent zoning, for instance, where we had, um, a landscape conservation zone, which is now an environmental zone. Um, I don't think this application has addressed that adequately for me. It's fine to have a report, a floral fauna report, that looks at the endangered species in the area. But from a vis, and a secondary thing to that is that within looking at those zonings, that is what regional planning is about. So to take an application from anywhere, whether it's two lots or eighty lots, which this subdivision is, well, this rezoning will accommodate, um, the preference for me is to wait until the land use strategy is reviewed. Because without those sorts of connections, we again are going to overload the bridge. With people in these circumstances living in small areas, what is the adequacy of those bus services, particularly when they're wanting to get to work at particular times? And I feel that this will create a precedent for a large change, a change to the urban growth boundary that will be followed by many other applicants in Clarence if we go ahead and support this. I doubt the minister would even look at it from my perspective because it is not just a minor change, it's a huge change.
Thank you, Alderman, come on. I respect it. Alderman Von Deter. We'll defer to Alderman here if I would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, look, I've, I've been giving this, uh, motion, this application, a lot of consideration, um, and really grappling with it. And to be honest, I was genuinely undecided, uh, even when the, when the debate started this meeting. Um, but I've listened, I've listened to the debate so far. And what I've noted is that there are some issues in the design of the subdivision, which I understand from the officer's report can be addressed through modifications of the proposal. Um, I've also noted that the officers have gone through and looked at the, um, uh, state policies and act objectives and that the, the objectives are supported by the proposal. Um, and it seems like as, um, the proponents of this have, have said, that the key question is one of, uh, do we allow a development outside, a residential development outside the urban growth boundary? And one of the clauses in the officer's report really jumped out at me, uh, which is paragraph one point five. Now, I, I note Alderman's earliest comments that the, the last review of the urban growth, of, of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy was in twenty thirteen. And so we've basically had, uh, had a couple of minor amendments to the urban growth boundary since, um, but, uh, you know, no serious look at the urban growth boundary for, for some time. And I think it's important to have, and it's both in the officer's recommendation and Alderman James's motion, to call for, for a review of Strelus and the urban growth boundary. And that's very important when you look at paragraph one point five of the officer's report, which says, although it has now been amended several times, the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy is fundamentally unchanged despite important changing trends in population, housing, transportation, and traffic amendment, infrastructure, and other planning issues since that time. Now, here we have a, a development before us, which, yes, it sits outside the urban growth boundary, but the urban growth boundary hasn't been given any serious consideration for some time. It's one that's close to existing residential development, existing infrastructure, and it's one that, uh, supports the, um, the policies and objectives, uh, under LUPA and, uh, the planning process established by this act. Um, and as such, I am going to support Alderman James's motion.
Very quickly, you should note on the documents that Atkins Street and Joseph Street actually are drawn and run straight into the subdivision. And that subdivision they come off was done forty years ago. Now, we've got, uh, houses and subdivisions all around it. We've got, now got the, uh, up around Glebe Hill and all around the fire station that's being developed now. And since this, uh, the urban growth boundaries were established, Tollard Drive has been completed. So I can't see any reason why the, that, that it's ready and it's ripe for development.
Having visited the site and having looked carefully at the application, there are apparent benefits in relation to this proposal. However, I wish to refer the Alderman to page one hundred and fifty of the report and part ten, the strategic overview. The proposal represents an urban expansion that is outside the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy urban growth boundary. The urban expansion beyond the urban growth boundary is not only contrary to LUPA, but has broader implications for the strategic planning of Greater Hobart and the future desired urban form. It does not satisfy the requirements of section thirty zero one and section thirty-two of LUPA. It relies on council to form the view that the proposal is consistent with Strelus. And this is clearly not the case and recognized in the applicant's report. It's an ad hoc, it's ad hoc without strategic foundation. Council has previously supported the protection of the urban growth boundary while advocating for an urgent review. There is a case that there is a land supply issue, particularly in this area. It would create a bad precedent signaling to developers a pathway to apply for ad hoc out-of-sequal development. The precedent would also apply to adjacent land, which in turn could result in ad hoc eating away at the landscape values of the Ropie Hills and potentially beyond. I have to say that I am looking at this from a strategic perspective. And I believe that we should all be doing that. We need to be looking at Clarence as a whole. So I believe until we actually have a review, which we have been asking for, for a number of years, ideally after five years, there should have been a review. We have been asking for, for a long time. And until such time as we have that review, then I'm not comfortable with actually supporting Alderman James's motion.
Hooker.
Thank you very much. Uh, it wouldn't be the first time across this chamber that I've echoed my concerns around the urban growth boundary. I, uh, think it's pretty far from ideal. And, you know, quite frankly, the way that it's operating now, it's, uh, upping the cost of land because supply is constrained. And in general, in today's market, it's drip feed out. And you can read in the report about three thousand lots. Well, really go onto realestate.com and buy me those three thousand vacant blocks right now. The component cost of land in the cost of a new dwelling has incredibly kept going up and up and up. But this site in question isn't just about more land for more land's sake. This is indeed an ideal site that should sit within any rational growth boundary concept. Um, this site is actually a site that I've, uh, raised in council question time several times this year. I've done this. In fact, if you go to about page, well, it's not listed as a page, but it would be page one hundred and fifty-five, you can see what I'm talking about. The concept of amenity is something that continually gets brought up in discussions in council. And this page just shows exactly how this development will improve amenity. This current location has become a concentrated magnet for the, uh, antisocial activities such as the disposals and burning out of, of motor vehicles. Um, so that's going to increase the amenity on that site. We've already had noted by other Aldermen, the high level of infrastructure that's integrated. And if I hear concerns about bus services, well, actually by, uh, increasing the population here, it's going to increase demand and viability on those bus services, which I think is good. Um, the topic of ad hoc racy, I guess, around, uh, rezoning has been raised as well. Well, in the absence of a major review, um, an ad hoc approach, uh, a case-by-case basis is something that may need to be taken a, a, about. And this is not breaking new ground. This, this something that occurred on the eighth of May in twenty eighteen, when far inferior sites in Sorrel and in Leno Valley were rezoned. So there's the amenity side, there's the infrastructure side that support this. Um, and then there's the, the fairness about availability of good quality, um, residential blocks. And this certainly, uh, is, is supported by the application. So, um, I do support the application and, uh, I hope that it proceeds through at a good pace.
James, write a reply.
Praise Mr. Mayor. Uh, this motion covers a lot of the issues that in fact have been discussed this evening. And I would like to draw council's attention to item C, in which the council resolves to advise the applicant that further information relating to store water capacity and design is required and the subdivision is to be redesigned. So it's advising the, the proponent that there are concerns regarding the subdivision. Also at item B in the, in the motion, the council urges the minister to urgently undertake a comprehensive review of straws and provide an appropriate structure to ensure its ongoing maintenance review. So it's included that in, in the motion as well. And finally, under F, the proposal meets the requirements of section thirty-two, excuse me, of LUPA and the requirements and the preparation of the amendment in relation to the objectives and so forth. I seek council support.
So the, uh, motion before the chair is to approve as outlined by Alderman James. All those in favor? Against? Carry it. That concludes our business as a planning authority. And, uh, we move on to governance. Eleven point seven point one is the youth plan for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two that council endorses and adopts the youth plan. Move Alderman, come on. Second, Alderman Von Deter. Alderman, would you like to speak to it?
Uh, once again, Mr. Mayor, I am totally happy to support the review of the plan and, and praise the staff for the effort that has gone into this. As we know, there is often a lot of consultation within the community groups involved and those that stand, I mean, come to council, um, on a regular basis, and that is the Youth Committee, WINEAG. So again, these young people along with the staff have worked for the benefit of the issues that they feel, um, need addressing for themselves, and I can only support their request.
Alderman Von Deter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I actually believe that this is a very strong plan. It's a continuation of the planning that's been undertaken for a number of years. And I think the key areas, working together, giving people, young people a voice, getting help, feeling safe, and employment, education, and training are very important in terms of focus for council. As Chair of the Positive Aging Committee, we actually have quite a deal to do with the group that is working to advise council, this Youth Network Advisory Group. We've actually undertaken for a number of years a program called Our Shared Space with the young people. And today, for instance, there was a trivia challenge at the start to the school holidays. I actually believe that council needs to think very seriously about how we as elected members can interact more closely with WINEAG. And with that in mind, I would like to suggest that we have a workshop to be able to progress that partnership as far as the youth plan is concerned and the interaction with WINEAG. Because I feel that perhaps at this stage in proceeding, a number of the Aldermen would like to actually have more interaction with those young people who are, in essence, leaders within our community. Thank you.
Alderman, walk up.
Second, I spoke.
Yes, uh, Alderman Von Deter was the second.
Indeed. Uh, I will be supporting this. Now, there's a couple of, it's, there's some changes I'd like to see, but I don't know that I'll get them all through. One thing I would like to put to the mover of the motion is if we turn to page twenty of the, uh, report, it, it, uh, talks in relation to youth health and there's the two points involved. And the second point is explore methods and opportunities to improve access to services and information. Uh, if, with, with their willingness, I'd like to, on the first point, which is continue to provide a drop in youth health space at the Integrated Care Centre, just delete at the Integrated Care Centre. It might be that over time, this is, uh, seen as not the most ideal location and it's, uh, different to some locations that are used in other municipalities. So could well stay there for the whole time, but I think that that is a little bit prescriptive having that point written the way it is.
Alderman, second there. Happy with that? Okay, uh, that point's accepted.
And aside from that, it's a fairly robust plan and, uh, and I'll be, uh, supporting.
Uh, other speakers. Alderman James. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've made a comment in this place from a, on a number of occasions that, uh, we need to beef up our youth involvement within the city and also to, in relation to giving it the actual, um, status it deserves and on a par with the Positive Aging Committee, et cetera, et cetera. We have a number of committees and I personally would like to see that, and on page nineteen, it refers to form a special committee of council to facilitate the exchange of ideas, information, knowledge, and skills between the young people and council. So I think it's about time that we do have a special committee set up in which the, um, the youth can have a, a say and be on a sort of a, a par with some of the other special committees of council. We already have a number of committees. We have health and wellbeing, we have, um, positive aging and so on and so forth. And perhaps in the new council, which will occur obviously after October, that under the Health and Wellbeing Committee, we can have perhaps some subcommittees and, and the Health and Wellbeing Committee can be the committee, but you can have sort of subsets of, uh, positive aging and also the, um, the youth, um, plan or that youth identity in the form of a special committee. So then you have, uh, equal footing, Mr. Mayor, of those committees and also to your giving, uh, credence and, and support to the young, uh, generation within the city. I've been, and I know the mayor has been down to meetings at the Clarence Youth, um, buildings at, at, at. at Ropie. And just being there, you can sense that they don't have an identity as other committees of council have. And I think we need to change that. And by the very nature of supporting on page 19, the formation of a special committee of council, I think that's the start of where we are and should be going in relation to giving them, the youth within the city, some identity status within this committee structure. And I think that would be a positive move. And leading up to the council elections, it may mean that we can lock in to place this special committee and then move forward, giving them, as I mentioned, the status that the youth desire and I think deserve within the city of Clarence. I support it.
Delik?
Mr. Mayor, the wonderful thing about the youth plan and the work that WINEAG does is the collaboration it has with the schools in our area. So it gives a pathway for a very active area of our community and the education system for the young people to actually get their views across as well. And particularly Rodney College, Bayview Secondary College, Clarence and Rose Bay High, where the brains of the students have been picked to actually have, provide great input into it. I'm a little bit wary in the sense that you don't meddle with something unless it's broke. This whole youth plan has been brought about by a really fantastic working committee. It would be a little bit sort of, it would have to make sure that none of that productivity was halted by an over interference from perhaps council. So it probably would have to come very much as a, as something that particularly committee wanted and wanted to see that there was a pathway to perhaps even greater effectiveness by having somebody as a spokesperson that can effect things around this table. Thank you.
Gordon, please. We buy Alderman Farland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am heartily pleased to hear of Alderman James' support for committees and subcommittees under our wellbeing policy. This has been suggested at a workshop in the past and I'd like to include, you know, some further investigation of subcommittees to accommodate the needs of community road safety and the new reconciliation council and those interactions that we will have with the implementation of plans in the future. This particular plan has been worked on for a long time by our own staff and youth in our community and I recommend it to council.
So the motion before the chair is that we endorse and adopt the youth plan 2018-2022. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.7.2, amendments to the constitution for the Land and Coast Care Resource Management Committee. I think Alderman Farland would have won that one, Alderman Walker.
I support the recommendation that the name of the Land and Coast Care Resource Committee be changed to the Natural Resource Management Advanced Committee and that council formally adopts the constitution for the Natural Resource Management Advanced Committee.
Have a second there. Alderman Von Bertha? Alderman Farland, you have the floor?
Over a large number of years, this committee has worked, surely as a grants committee in the context of allocation of money. However, part of their unrecognized work was also in the review of the natural resource activity plan done for individual reserves and the implementation of Clarence Council's coastal strategy, as referring to which all of the landcare groups come under. So this climate, the, this change also is indicative of the need and the work that has been done in the past from a regional perspective as well. Within resource management, there's a large degree of involvement across the board between the community groups, the bushland and coast groups that were there in the past. And those groups also interact with the natural resource management at a state level and a southern level. So we need to work together in a more regional capacity because it gives us a better long-term strategy when we're looking at issues concerned with climate change or erosion or whatever those issues are for the particular area. In the past, those sorts of inputs from the committee and a large number of the committee are professionals in the field, they're not the same as the landcare groups, which involve everyday ordinary citizens. A large number of them actually work in natural resource management at other councils and within the state government. This is a standard constitution. It is similar to all of the other constitutions held by committees at council. There is no real change from its original constitution, except to incorporate the professional advice of our council climate change resource officer and also actively be more actively involved in natural resource management at a southern region. So I support this in the context that we have not had the ability to have a committee that can report to council on the needs of natural resource management in half the same degree that's going to be needed in the future.
Alderman Von Bertha?
Walker? Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, what is before us at the moment is a significant change to a committee as a previously operator. And I'd note that a council election is imminent. And bearing those two things in mind, I'm going to switch to a procedural motion to say that this, this item should be deferred for the next, for consideration by the next council.
Do we have a second of a procedural motion? Alderman James? So we have a procedural motion that would be deferred until the next council. There's no debate on a procedural motion. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Did you wish to continue, Alderman Walker?
No, I didn't wish to continue. I wished, I wished the procedural motion to be successful, Mr. Mayor, which it wasn't. But I, again, stand by those points. I won't be supporting this because of its proximity to the council election and the fact that committees should be reviewed after that point in time, as is the normal case. But making such a major change to a committee so, so soon to the upcoming next, next cycle of council, I think is imprudent and not, not something we should be doing.
Alderman James?
Yes, I'm coming in a different direction to Alderman Walker and that is that it's a case of identity. To actually change the name from Land and Coast Care Resource Management Committee or Land and Coast Care, you're making a fundamental change to a name that has been identified as part of the community, as part of the sharing that the community has done and has initiated many programs on the coast and within the landcare establishments. And so by changing the name to something, which has been proposed here, to Natural Resource Management and Grants Committee, it may lose its significance in the eyes of the public because it doesn't mean anything in the eyes of the public, in my opinion. Whereas Land and Coast Care does. And it's been identified over the years as being one of the moving forces, particularly in Clarence and those other councils that are above coastal areas within their particular municipality. And the people know it. They've identified with it and know it to be good, to work and be worthwhile and to be able to succeed in getting grants for coast care groups and June reconstruction or revegetation and so on. So by changing the name, you're going to lose, in my opinion, the identity. And it's, it's a shame because where people know it now for what it is, it's going to be basically lost in a, in a, an acronym of NRMAGC. And whereas Landcare Group, well, LC Group or LCRC, well, we don't need to worry about the committee as such, but Landcare versus Natural Resource Management, goodness gracious, I just think it's a, it's a move in the wrong direction and it's going to be very, very difficult to be able to succeed with a name change when in fact we have locked into place over the years that Land and Coast Care is, becomes synonymous with any council that is caring and concerned about its coastal reserves. I will not support it. I understand where the mover is going in relation to trying to bring a professional expertise into this in order to sort of provide the professional advice that council needs. But we, we, we still, we can still do that with the Landcare. What's the difference? Just being able to provide professional advice to council within this new structure. It's already there. I won't support it, Mr. Mayor, and speak against the motion. Other speakers?
Alderman Pierce?
I just want to clarify one thing. Now, I had a bit of trouble with this today where I'm reading the new constitution, it's got public attendance at a committee meeting is by invitation only. So, I mean, I can understand.
If you could take notice of that for the writer reply, please. And from me, if you could advise in the writer reply, the second last bullet point under objectives to be actively involving in providing advice to NRM South, would you see a committee directly engaging and advising NRM South or doing it through the council? If you could say that for the writer reply too, please. All right. Any other speakers? When you're ready, Alderman Farland?
Just to clarify, this request came from ongoing conversations between community groups and the fact that there is a bit of restraint within the grants allocation of council and the ability for the committee to actually self-direct towards regional funding. So in the past, having been an initial member of Landcare in this municipality and also within the context of that Landcare group acquiring money from federal grants to actually initiate the first Clarence Plan Management Plan, which wasn't a surprise for council at the time, that they wanted to have that ability to interact more on a, on a better and more formal basis and also that members of NRM South are actually on our council committee. So there is a direct, ongoing conversation occurring, but there needs to be a formal ability to do so. And these proposed changes, thank you, were presented to Alderman at council workshop back in 2018. But as with all processes, we have ongoing project management that needs to be addressed prior to paperwork processes within the council's agenda and timeframe. And so I can assure you with a bit of frustration, we've got here today from me. To answer the question about public attendance, no, committees are closed in some regard unless there's a request. And I doubt that any committee would say no to anybody in the public who wanted to attend a meeting. The direct response to NRM South, I think I've already answered this, because the Grants Committee didn't have a structure in which they could interact in a formal way. This constitution has been called for also in the past by the Tractor Trail Committee in 2012. And again, it was a similar request, looking at ongoing strategic planning and an ability to get grant allocations through and give support to grant allocations. As we know, the natural environment is pretty much under stress and this council has done an amazing job with various types of projects connected with the main range, weed management and the bushland and Clarence Bushland and coastal strategies, which we've reviewed.
Thank you. So the motion is that we adopt the new constitution. All those in favour? Six against? The motion is carried. The, moving on to item 12, Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notion, notice. So questions for that notice, I think Alderman Von Bertha, would you like to start? Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, can I ask the officer, Bayview Drive, Lorda? It's quite a bit of a steep rise up that road, but magnificent views. And I always thought at the end it was a turning circle, but I left cars parked in that circle. I always thought that, you know, because the road finishes, it was actually, there's no turning circle. Someone tell me if it is a turning circle or cars parked there?
Let's take that on notice, Mr. Mayor. We'll look in my suggestions to investigate.
Alderman Pierce?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lorda Dalgora erosion issue. At the last council meeting, we approved a motion to have some sand replaced on the Lorda Beach. And now I understand that sand's washed away. Does this cause another safety issue? And are we proposing to do anything about it? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The storm events of the last week have created quite a further bit of erosion along there. In terms of further work, I would be proposing to get a council backhoe down there as soon as we can effectively just to knock the edges off the cliff face and smoothen it down. It's not something that requires vast quantities of removal of sand like last time or anything of that nature. It's about, I'm told, about half to three quarters of a day's work for a backhoe.
Alderman?
I just wanted to ask the Bowery, sorry, second. Mr. Mayor, the Bowery Howard Coastal Reserve Activity Plan, it's a 2015 to 2019 plan. Would that mean that that would be, then be reviewed again next year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure whether it meant that it'd be reviewed at 2019 or at the commencement of 2020, but effectively within that period, it would be, would be reviewed. Now, I can give you exact dates if you wish, but at the moment, it runs to 2019 and it'd be at the conclusion of the current plan, we would commence the review of the next one.
Second question was there, or Alderman Farland?
I have two tonight. One is the smell of the sewer at Ropie. I've visited down there a couple of times. I occasionally walk my dog there. And I have had conversations with tenants across the road who are now leaving because of the smell. Now, have asked in the past what was their problems and found there's been minor issues. However, this has been ongoing for nearly six months now. So I'd like a report back to council on that because it's been going for so long.
So is, what's your question?
The smell. What's causing the smell and how it's going to be fixed and when? We're sorry about that.
Thank you. I understand.
I do need a bit of scenery.
I understand the nature.
I understand the nature of the question. As council's representative, Taz Water, I'll take the matter up with him.
Good.
But if you could provide with any more detail you've got, that would help in doing so.
I did ask for them to email the general manager, but I haven't heard from the general manager, so.
And your second question?
Yes. The audit committee requested a report and review of our council's community consultation policy and when will that come to council?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that we, officers have yet received the final report from the consultant. First date, it will go to, when received, go to an audit committee meeting and then the audit committee generally report their deliberations to council as part of their reports from committees process. But I don't have an exact date at the start.
Alderman Farland?
Two questions in relation to cats and dogs, just through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Tui. The cat policy or cat management policy, is that advancing at all with the state government?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the state has adopted a cat management policy. Another part of it, the response was to draft significant amendments to the cat management legislation and that's yet to be drafted.
to Mr. Tui. What is the normal practice for addressing complaints from the public as far as a barking dog?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I've provided a more detailed report which will be a lot more comprehensive, but briefly, if a person's willing to identify. Formal means of investigation, which involves monitoring people, possibly keeping diaries
Alderman Walker?
It's much sadness that I wasn't able to attend the infrastructure budget bus trip of this year. I understand that, yes. I understand that the trip did include the piggotty mosaic that is Victoria Espinar and as such, I'm wondering if there are any imminent plans in relation to that piece of road infrastructure as far as a repair or reseal. I'll take that question on as and provide the answer. I don't know the answer, I'll pass my head.
Alderman James? Firstly, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sure it's through you to Mr. Paul. Mr. Paul, any news on the appointment of an independent chairperson for the public meeting on the 17th of July, ADN Re, the Rodney Hill Development?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, I can advise that, and I've got to think of his name. Thank you. Gary Baer. Sorry, I've got a mental blank there. We have registered him as Mr. Gary Baer, the former editor of the Mercury to chair the public.
My second question is, it's my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that before work can start on the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Training Facility, that a number of management plans, economic and management and assessment plans have to be provided before work will be, can start. Have those plans been provided? If so, when would council issue the permit?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, not all, at this moment, certainly as of Friday anyway, that not all the prerequisite plans prior to the issue of the building permit had been received. I believe they're underway, but once they are received and considered by the relevant council offices as to be reasonable, that will be one of the components required in relation to be satisfied prior to the issue of the building permit. But assuming that they're all in order when received, I would expect the building permit to issue very shortly after that. So I don't have a defined time frame at the moment, but I would expect it probably be in the next week or so that that would be, those matters would be resolved.
Subliminal, given that those plans, environmental and management, et cetera, were a part of the mediation process which went to that. Yeah. Is Mr. Lockley advised of that or is the tribunal advised that those plans have been provided or are they basically, or is that tribunal advised that once they have been received and the permit's been issued?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is there'd be no correspondence with the tribunal or Mr. Lockley in that respect, in the sense that they are just further conditions of the permit that need to be satisfied. As the conditions are satisfied, we don't advise the commission, it's just another set of conditions that we need to ensure are in place prior, either prior to the development opening or in other circumstances, sorry, prior to development commencing or in other conditions prior to the opening or the operation being undertaken.
That brings us to the conclusion of the open session of council. I'd like to thank the members of the public that have stayed here tonight. We do need to go in closed session to consider some issues which, unlike federal and state governments, we don't have cabinet, we have no other way of meeting to consider these items, so we have to do it in closed session. So thank you very much for your attendance tonight. Louie Dalton here, second of Alderman Schusick. All those in favour? Carried unanimously.